I have a book for eight hundred dollars. I do.
Ms. Palmer, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Fan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Broadwater?
Here. Okay, at this time, we just came back from a closed session item for the successor agency and the city, and the city council and successor agency authorized initiative of foreclosure on deed of trust on 13651 Havenwood Drive. We have nothing else there. At this time, we will have the...
Invocation.
Looking for it. Okay, we'll have the flag salute, and then we'll have the invocation by Kingsley. Chris, will you lead us in flag salute?
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence this evening as we begin the work entrusted to us by the citizens of the city. Bestow your blessings on our deliberations that we may have the benefit of your wisdom and integrity in making decisions that affect the lives of those who live and work in our great Garden Grove community. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all. Okay, we're going to go directly to oral communications to be held simultaneously with the successor agency, and I think we'd like to have Mrs. Kim Hoy read a little statement before we get into that.
Thank you. Well, Mayor and Mayor of the City Council, we'd like to let you know that this morning, the community services staff met with Craig Cassidy, the president of the West Garden Grove Little League regarding a proposal to use Garden Grove Park baseball fields for their 2013 Little League season. The issues that we discussed regarded the number of fields that were available, the type and amount of work that would be required to get the fields Little League ready, the responsibility for the field maintenance, the restroom use regarding the opening, closing, and cleanup of the facilities, the snack bar privileges and options for a portable snack bar, and also the hours and the length of use that they would have the fields. We believe that all of the needs of the West Garden Grove Little League can be met at Garden Grove Park, and Mr. Cassidy stated that they might have an option to share the baseball fields in the city of Westminster, and he'll be presenting both of those options to his board next week.
Anything else you want to add about the ability of us?
Well, we did share with Mr. Cassidy later in a telephone discussion just that the city of Garden Grove does not control the Bell Intermediate School baseball fields. Those are actually controlled by the district, and that it really limits the amount of ability that the city has in making any decisions regarding those fields. We really can only control what we maintain and operate, and that would be Garden Grove Park.
So if the school district decided that they were going to build their own building, would they pull a building permit from the city of Garden Grove? Would that be done?
No, actually, the school district has their special powers and authorities that the state gives them, that they do not have to process their permits through the city, and they can construct a facility.
So anything they do on the city, I mean, anything they do on the school district property, they have total control of? We have no say over any of it?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to oral communications. Craig Cassidy.
I am the president of West Garden Grove Little League, and I'm here to inform and update the mayor and the rest of the council on the school district's decision to not allow our Little League to play baseball at our home fields behind Bell and Intermediate. I received a letter dated February 1, 2012, from the school district informing us of the closure at Bell for modernization. Simply stated, the letter concludes in the final sentence that we, Garden Grove School District, will work with all current youth permit holders to relocate them to alternate fields. To date, this is the only written document that I have received from the school district. On July 1, Bell was officially closed, and our permit expired. Two months later, on September 1, the contractor finally began the modernization project. In October, I visited Belichick on our snack shack equipment facilities behind the school. At this time, I met with the onsite contractor and asked if he thought it would be okay for West Garden Grove Little League to start doing field maintenance on the six baseball fields in preparation for the 2013 season. His response was that would be no problem, but Garden Grove Unified needed to authorize such action. At this time, it was our assumption that we were led to believe there was a possibility to have our 2013 baseball season at Bell. On November 1, I began emailing the school district, contacting Sal Sanchez, in an effort to meet with the appropriate representatives of the school district to discuss possible solutions. It was not until December 6 that I was first given the chance to sit down and discuss this possible solution. At this meeting, I met with Sal Sanchez, who informed me that things did not look good for us, but that Stuart Mo would be joining the meeting to have the final say regarding Bell. At this time, I was verbally offered an alternate field, Hare Park, which is the site for Central Garden Grove Little League. I informed Sal that per conversations with Central Garden Grove's president, this was not a viable option, and that two Little Leagues cannot coexist at the same site. When Stuart Mo joined our meeting, I was finally given the chance to present to a decision-maker what Garden Grove Little League's proposal would be to make our season a possibility at Bell. The proposal was pretty simple. At the cost of a West Garden Grove Little League, not the school district, we would put in place a 200-plus yards of six-foot fencing separating the baseball fields and the modernization project. Furthermore, we offered to increase the number of parental volunteers to monitor these fenced areas. After hearing this proposal, Stuart Mo voiced a concern over the liability for the contractor and the school district, and that he would have to meet the contractor to share our proposal. Stuart Mo then said that he felt the contractor would probably not have a problem with the idea and would consider helping us out in this matter. Upon leaving the meeting, I was under the impression that the future of West Garden Grove Little League at our homes' fields was pretty good. However, I again received a delayed response, and a week and a half passed before I received a response on December 16 that the contractor and the school district had turned down our proposal. Within the last month, I have obtained a copy of the contract for the Bell project. There are options available within this contract that we believe would allow us to access our fields. Also, we now have received our new renewed certificate of liability from Little League International, which has specific language that releases liability to the school district or any outside entities. Similar language already exists in the standard Garden Grove Unified School District permit form, which is annually submitted by West Garden Grove Little League. It should also be noted that West Garden Grove Softball has been allowed to have their 2013 season across the street at Enders Elementary while their school modernization project is currently in progress. We are not asking the school district to bear any burden for our kids to play baseball. We will and have offered to take the majority of the burden for fencing and increased parental volunteer supervision. We're hoping the mayor and city council can assist us getting the Garden Grove School District and contractor together. The hope is just to sit down with the right decision-makers to negotiate what we believe is a solution. We are looking for your help to keep intact 55-plus years of Little League at West Garden Grove. We are losing kids each day as we speak while this open space is not being utilized for our kids. Not playing on our home field at Bell creates the possibility of the downfall and potential desolment of West Garden Grove Little League. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Keith Martin.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Keith Martin. I'm a concerned resident of West Garden Grove, a parent of two boys that play in the league, a board member, and a coach in the league. My kids have been involved in West Garden Grove Little League for the past five seasons. I've also coached AYSO Soccer, FNL Football, and a travel baseball team in our community. West Garden Grove Little League has been a tradition in our community for over 50 years. Every year, we see our neighbors that are no longer with our league come back to the fields to enjoy a hot dog, watch a good baseball game, and cheer our kids on. I grew up playing Little League baseball. I always had the dream of representing my community and my country at Williamsport, Pennsylvania, in the Little League World Series. When my boys decided they wanted to play baseball, I could think of no other place where they were going to play than Little League. And now I share the dream with them, that they have, one day, will have the opportunity to play in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, representing West Garden Grove. Every year up to this point, we watched the Little League World Series on ESPN and dreamed of the day when we could be there together. I made many lifelong friends playing Little League baseball. When I get together with my friends today, we still reminisce about the games that we had just like there yesterday. As a parent in West Garden Grove, I've met many families that have become dear to me and will be part of my life for years to come. If we're not able to have a season this year or forced to play an alternate location, there'll be a significant impact on the future of our league, both emotionally and financially. Baseball in Southern California is so competitive. Leagues are waiting for kids to join all the time. Our biggest draws are T-ball and our coach pitch divisions. When new parents go to sign up their kids for the league, they want to play in a local community and not have to travel a distance to play. If they're forced to travel, oftentimes, they'll choose to play in a league where they have other friends at. Once they travel to another league, they'll build relationships, gain friends, and it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to get them to return to their home leagues. We feel that having our season in our fields and not having our season in our field will have a substantial economic impact to our local community. First off, our snack shack, which is our major revenue maker for our Little League, cleared just over $13,000 in profits last year. This revenue loss will limit our ability to control the cost of our registration, provide well-groomed fields for our kids to play on, and provide top-of-line uniforms for our kids to wear. This will all affect several local vendors that we utilize to provide support for our league: our uniform vendors, our screen printers, our local gardeners that help maintain our fields, the shops that we provide the food for the snack shack at. It's all locally to West Garden Grove. Because we have one of the best complexes in Little League, in our Little League district, we're often awarded All-Star tournaments or end-of-the-year playoff tournaments. This in turn provides extra revenue for our community. Also, many evenings after the games during the All-Star tournaments host our board meetings, our parents, our friends, our kids, all frequent the local businesses, restaurants, bowling alleys, movie theaters, to continue to foster the atmosphere of fun and family like Little League provides. Lastly, by not having our season in our fields, it inhibits our ability to attract sponsors that assist in offsetting the cost to run our league. It's a tough economy. It's difficult to attract these necessary sponsors, and even harder to keep them year after year. Once we lose a sponsor, it's almost impossible to regain their support. West Garden Grove Little League has impeccable safety record. We pride ourselves in being an area that's very neatly kept, it's controlled, and it's patrolled by our volunteer board. In fact, we've helped the school district many times by running off kids who are not from our league, who are unlawfully trespassing on the school grounds. We've confronted kids that are climbing on the roof, skateboarding inside the fenced area of the school, and not following the rules of the school grounds. We've contacted Little League International, who provides our insurance for our league, to see how many documented claims we have over the past 10 years. It's not a surprise to us, but it may be to you, that in the last 10 years, we have not had a single claim of an injury occurring outside the field of play. Mayor Broadwater, fellow board, I ask for your assistance. I plead for your assistance. Help negotiate with the school district to allow us to have the season in our field like we have for the last more than 50 years. West Garden Grove Little League has been a tradition in our community, and it's a tradition we want to preserve for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Laura Cassidy.
Hi, my name is Laura Cassidy. I am the mother of two boys who have been playing in the league for seven years now. I'm also starting my fourth year as the auxiliary president, volunteer on the board. One of the most anticipated events at West Garden Grove Little League is the parade. I know that the majority of you have participated in the parade many times in years past, and as you know, it is a great time for not only the players, but the community as well. In addition to our council members, we include the principal and assistant principals of all the surrounding schools, the West Grove Girls' Softball Team, the Pacifica Boys' Baseball Team, the Miss Garden Grove and Court, and also the local fire department. We also strive to invite someone from the community as our general marshal. Two years ago, we had Ashlyn Watson as our general marshal. She played for Pacifica Baseball and then went on to the University of Washington to play for them. She was so thrilled to participate in the parade since she, as a West Garden Grove softball player, walked that parade so many times before as a child. As you know, we have to obtain signatures from the homes that are affected by the street closures for our permit for the parade. In obtaining those signatures, that's about 75 homes that are affected. We have never, in the years that I have done this, ever had a homeowner refuse to sign that form, ever. I think they are just as excited about the parade as the kids are. Unfortunately, if we go with any alternative locations, this is going to prevent us from having our tradition of this parade. On February 1, 2012, the league received a letter from the school district, the same letter that Craig had mentioned earlier, but it reads also, and this is quote, "Rest assured that every effort will be made to limit the impact the modernization program will have on our youth groups. Whenever possible, in accordance with our board policies and administrative regulations, the highest priority and consideration will be given to our youth groups when allocating fields and school facilities. The following process is in place to determine priority among youth groups." And then the first bullet point reads, quote, "nonprofit youth groups who serve primarily district students," end quote. That is 100% us. Our league boundaries include Pacifica, Bell, Barker, Patton, Enders, and Garden Park. With this letter, we assured our parents and our members that the district would be doing everything they could to allow us to have access to our fields. Part of our logo that we included a few years back included the word "integrity" on it, and unfortunately, that has been compromised because without the confirmation from the school, we could not guarantee that we would have access to the fields, and therefore, parents have chosen to take their kids elsewhere. And it's not even within our community. It's elsewhere outside the community. It's Los Alamos. It's Silver Beach. It's Cypress. The parents don't want to leave. It's heartbreaking for them to have to leave. It's heartbreaking for the kids to not be able to play with their friends, but they had no other choice because we had no definitive answer. I am very proud of our community. I am proud to be from West Garden Grove. I feel what we provide on the field and off the field are wonderful friendships and lasting memories for our children. If we lose this season or are forced to play an alternate field, we have let our kids down. This will be the only year my oldest son will be eligible to play at Williamsport. He wants to play with his friends, the same kids that he's been playing with for seven years. The longer this drags on, the more kids we lose. We want to keep our kids together. We want to keep our community together. These children do not want to lose their parade, and they do not want to lose any more friends to another league. These children, behind me now, they deserve to play at their field. Okay? It can happen. I know it can happen. We just need the right people to guide the situation to make it happen. Thank you.
Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, also happy new year. First, let me start off by saying, and get to, I hope that the recorder's running. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for returning my phone call. I appreciate that. Very nice. Any case, let me get to my points here because I want to get to the last one, which is really important. Anyways, at the last council meeting, Ms. Nguyen addressed a certain individual appeared in Vietnamese, the language, and it was kind of awkward for those of us who only speak English. We felt alienated. For all I know, Ms. Nguyen was probably making some excellent points, but I wouldn't know because I don't understand Vietnamese. I sent you a letter asking that you apologize to the community for that, but I'd also suggest in the future, if you're going to do that, have an interpreter so we can follow along what's being said when it's being said. It just makes it easier for all of us. So we'd appreciate that if you do that in the future. Oral communications, I understand that we're looking at cutting it down from five minutes to three and reducing the number of folks who are going to talk. The problem that I have with that is that the, well, five minutes, okay, to three minutes, maybe, if you're well-prepared, like these folks here tonight, the West Garden Grove Little League, you might be able to get everything into it in three minutes, but there's other topics that'll be covered. For example, I have four that I'm going to cover. I'm trying to get through this one quickly, but get the information out. But any case, it's the time limitation, and who actually gets to speak, I guess, is my concern, because as I'm looking at California Government Code 54-594.3A, which reads, "Agenda items for regular meeting shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before, during, or during the legislative body's consideration of the item." If we're going to start limiting people, we may not be able to get all the information out like we've done tonight so far with the West Garden Grove Little League, so I would respectfully disagree that you cut it down the number of people. I understand you want to move your agenda through, cut it down to five to three minutes. Understood. But like you've said so many times, Mr. Mayor, and I've heard you say this, Garden Grove sets a standard. For example, we didn't get involved in that economy collapse there when all these other cities went kaput. You've been saying that Garden Grove was smart enough to stay out of that. Well, Garden Grove should be smart enough to make sure that we keep our freedom of speech intact, and that's per the First Amendment, so we'd appreciate that. Moving on to the Low Cell Air Base, still having a problem? This came up back in 2009. I sent the council an email dated December 26, 2012. The folks in my neighborhood have been calling the AQMD. The AQMD tells us that, you know, we should be calling the Orange County Healthcare Agency because they're the ones who approved the odor impact minimization plan back in July of 2009. And when I addressed the Low Cell Council, my problem there was it's a minimization plan. It's not an elimination plan, so it's still ongoing. They've said they're no longer composting, they're mulching. Call it composting, call it mulching, smells the same to us. Please help out with that. Okay, and the last item is I'm also president of the West Garden Grove Resident Association still. While our numbers shrink and swell and shrill and shrink, I still get emails, phone calls, letters, et cetera. West Garden Grove Little League is very near and dear to my heart, had a large number of friends that have coached in it, that have been board members, et cetera, I mean, for years and years, when it was over at Cerulean and Valley View to where it's at now. I believe there is some room in here, and let me just read from the contract between the school district and the contractor. Section 47, Agreement Modification. No waiver, alteration, or modification of any of the provisions of this construction services agreement shall be binding upon either the district or the contractor unless the same shall be in writing and signed by both parties. So with that, if you look at the sublease, it says here, "The Lesser," which is the contractor, "Lesser acknowledges that any time during the term of the sublease, the district may access the site to conduct district business. Issuing sites to organizations, youth organizations that service the district is district business. Lesser acknowledges and agrees that the district's use or occupation of the site, so long as such occupation or use does not unreasonably interfere with the construction of the project." Well, it's working over at Enders. It should be able to work at Bell. And I just have one more comment on the opening statement that our city staff gave. I'm looking at the Chapter 9 of the Parks and Recreation and Open Element Space in Garden Grove. The city of Garden Grove has included the Parks, Recreation, Open Space Element to its general plan because providing adequate parkland recreation opportunities, et cetera. But also further down, it says this, "Open space includes city parks, all school district properties." This is in your documents, guys. "All school district properties, along with Orange County Transit Authority, right-of-ways, flood controls, et cetera." So I believe that the West Garden Grove Little League, who is asking your help to facilitate a meeting between all the parties to make sure that we get our season, our tradition. A lot of campaign, we just came off a campaign. A lot of you guys made all these promises. You're for the people, with the people, by the people. Tonight's your chance to prove it by helping these folks get a meeting set with the parties so we can get this resolved. And also, too, Assembly Bill 2404, which has to do with the...
Way over time, Tony. You're talking about going from six minutes to 10 minutes here. Give it a break.
Yes, sir. Anyways, adequate, fair and adequate use of the Parks and Recreation Open Space. So that's where that's at. Any case, thanks for indulging me, Mr. Mayor and staff and council, but let's help this West Garden Grove Little League. Do what you promised during your campaigns. Thanks again.
Matt, do you have any more cards there that address the Little League?
Just one more. Where did it go?
Give you a card and you lose it, huh?
Yeah.
I think it was Greg Morse. Is that the name?
Yeah, there's one more addressing the...
Mitzi Cristobal. Find the card, will you please? Go ahead.
Hi there. I'm here on behalf of Nico Black, and I'm sure you guys have all heard, she's the cancer patient that was, that has been illegally evicted from her home on Shannon in Garden Grove. The reason why I'm here is because what we're, what we're imploring for you guys to do is to look into why the Garden Grove Department, Police Department, is not taking reports for her. Not only are they not protecting her, but they are also harming her. They refuse to take reports for her, and they stand with Wells Fargo, doing things for Wells Fargo. On November 13, she was granted from the courts the opportunity to go to her home and collect her items, and when she showed up with like two friends, the Garden Grove Police Department was there with Wells Fargo and the Orange County sheriffs, denying her to get into her home to get the things that she was supposed to be allowed to get. Not only did they not let her in, but they also threatened her that if she stepped onto the property, they would have the Wells Fargo security guard do a citizen's arrest. She did not, she wasn't able to go and get her property. Well, today, with Garden Grove Police Department, Wells Fargo, and Orange County sheriffs, they took her cars and impounded it, you know? And this is the thing, I, I'm a friend of hers, okay? And it's really sad for me to see something like this happening. I have been an eyewitness to know some of the things that have happened where she was denied the opportunity to do... denied the opportunity to do a police report and have been threatened from the police because they are involved, you know, any assistance. Sorry, this really bothers me. She was, she was placed into a home that we thought was a charitable fund after her being displaced on October 10th. The home came to be found out by, funded by Wells Fargo. The lady who owned the home ended up firing the social worker because the social worker was helping Nico and the ladies out there. Ended up being very abusive, things like that. Police department was called because they were kicking her out because she had, you know, people checking up on her. The bed was paid for by a breast cancer angels, and yet the owner is asking her for $500 cash. Give me your $500 cash now or you'll be out of the street. And I've heard this from even her roommate. She got kicked out. Police Department, Garden Grove Police Department came and asked the owner, do a citizen's arrest on her so I can arrest her. These things you guys need to look into because, because we cannot do a police report, we've been having to record every time that the Garden Grove Police Department is refusing her police report. So we have video. I'm asking you guys to look into why this is happening because this is your city. And I'm not saying all police, I'm not saying all the police department in Garden Grove is doing stuff wrong, but I'm saying there's something deeply wrong going on here and you guys should find out. I guess that's all I'm asking, is you guys need to look into it because there's something going on.
We will look into it. Get back with you. Robert Simonelli. Robert?
Hello, everyone. I'm here for, my name is Robert Simonelli. I'm here for Nico Black as well. I've been in Garden Grove for over 20 years. I went to Rancho Alameda's with Nico Black. It's a very disturbing circumstance and situation with her. Let me just lay down a couple of notes here. The common law is a principle based on morality, justice. It's also a reason of conscience, truth, and common sense. The system is based on judicial by the Magna Carta of 1215. We adopted this common law, and there's certain things that need to be addressed here. Marbury versus Madison, 1803, establishes anything which is repugnant to the Constitution is null and void.
Slow down.
Sorry.
I don't understand you when you talk that.
Okay, I'll try to talk slower. We need to make sure that her rights are being protected. We, the officers and the city council and all of you have took an oath to uphold the Constitution. It's the most important issue and the most important thing for an individual is their liberty. Without liberty, there is no freedom. And her being abused constantly by Wells Fargo, by the banks, feeling that they could dictate to her anything they want is, is just insensitive, and it's cruel, and it's wrong, and we need to put a stop to this. So I'm begging you, I'm asking you, imagine if it was your daughter, how would you handle that situation? Everyone here has someone they love. I have Nico Black as a friend, and I dearly love her, and to see her go through this is, is highly offensive to me and to everyone. As a community, we get together, we're to come together and stand up for those who try to oppress and take away our rights, and that's what I'm doing here today. And I'm begging you to look into this and look into this situation and understand that there is a federal court order that mandated that she is to have her rights to go into her property or to the house and take out her property. Why was that denied? We have questions. We want to know this. There needs to be answers. And I'm just asking you if you could look into that and see what kind of answers they're going to give you.
Are you here with Mitzi?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get back with one of you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to share a story from the Garden Grove School Board that I think it's important that you are aware of considering you sometimes have communications with them. At the Garden Grove School Board meeting of October 16th, there was a discussion with the board about special education funding. Special education is the department that takes care of, helps out disabled children. During that discussion, board member Lan Nguyen made the comment, "We don't like it, but we have to do. We don't like it, but we have to do," about special education funding. The people in the audience were outraged and talked about it to great length afterwards. When I heard about it, I went to the school board meeting and I said, "Mr. Nguyen, you should apologize to the hard-working staff that take care of disabled children. You should apologize to the community." He refused. Lan Nguyen is sometimes known as being very anti-communist. Well, I did a little bit of research. In Communist Vietnam, apparently, there are organizations that take care of disabled children. But here in America, you have a school board member that seems indifferent and makes insensitive comments. In my opinion, that makes Lan Nguyen crueler than a communist if he's not going to look out for disabled children. Again, I demand an apology. No other school board member spoke up to say something about what he said. I was hoping Baow Nguyen, the Democrat, would speak up and say something. He didn't. I believe Baow Nguyen's a lackey of Lan Nguyen and would never say anything negative against him. So what's this have to do with the Garden Grove City Council? You passed a resolution correctly, I believe, condemning or saying that communists from Vietnam shouldn't be here.
Do you understand why we did that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I support that. And I think sometimes, though, we need to pay attention to what's going on nearby when other political folks in the school board are not behaving badly. I respectfully ask if you come upon Lan Nguyen or the school board, ask them, "Why didn't you defend special ed children? Why didn't you defend the most vulnerable of our society?" Baow Nguyen, who knows why he didn't stand up? That's a lack of courage, in my opinion. I think it's important as a community that we respect and look after our disabled children in our community, and I hope you'll join with me in asking again that Lan Nguyen apologize to the community or explain himself, and I hope Baow Nguyen grows a backbone. Lastly, I'd just like to say I hope you continue to have five minutes for public comment. I think some folks are more prepared, can do that. I hope you'll respectfully consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I come in behalf of about 40 of my neighbors who live in a residential area in East Garden Grove bordering the City of Anaheim. We've had trouble for about a year now with oversized, overweight, and illegal bus traffic in our residential neighborhood. Is it permissible to hand out a map so you can see what I'm talking about?
Please give it to Ms. Palmero, will you please?
Okay. I have one for each member there. It's kind of crude, I'm sorry about that. It's just an area map of where I and my neighbors live. The crosshatched lines are the residential area of the map. The rest is to the right, and the upper part is Anaheim, the lower part is Garden Grove. But Orangewood and West are Garden Grove streets. I've noted signs in the neighborhood, one for no commercial traffic south of this point, that's Ricky Lane at the southeast corner of the Anaheim Convention Center, a sign at the southwest corner of Orangewood and West, no tour buses, and two signs on Orangewood, just west of Harbor, that say, "No vehicles over 6,000 pounds." These buses run constantly. 5:30 in the morning, they start and they run till 10 or 11 at night. I have property damage to my house already. Several of my neighbors have property damage from the vibration in the street. The street isn't that well-maintained. They've dug it up a couple times and it's not smooth. The buses roar by, shake my house. The quality of life for my neighbors and myself is going down, not to mention our sanity. There are no stops these buses make on either Orangewood or West Street. They continue through the neighborhood and make stops north of Catella. They're not using the major intersections that are built for those kind of vehicles, Catella and Harbor Boulevard. They're taking a shortcut through our neighborhood. Garden Grove doesn't have a commercial enforcement task force, I'm told by the Police Department. We need one, but I would like, and my neighbors would like, this illegal, oversized, and overweight traffic to stop coming through our neighborhoods, and we would appreciate anything that you people can do about it.
I'll have the police chief talk to you about this, see what we can do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Over 40 years ago, I bought my first brand-new car. I was thrilled to death with it, and I was enjoying it immensely for about three weeks until I got rear-ended by a drunk driver. Fortunately, I didn't suffer any severe injuries, and the driver did have insurance. But I cannot abide people who get behind the wheel of a car, knowing that they are not in control of their faculties and are taking a risk of bodily injury or substantial damage to other people's property by driving while they're under the influence. I have gone out of my way several miles on occasion, putting on my emergency blinkers and honking my horn while following an obviously drunk driver who is weaving all over the road for two purposes. Number one, to warn other drivers, but number two, hopefully, to get the attention of law enforcement. On some occasions, this has worked. But the thing with driving under the influence is you don't have the reaction time that you would, and believe me, even in a sober condition, there are things that are going to happen that we cannot anticipate. We have to be prepared all the time when we're driving for anything that may be out of the ordinary. I've done a lot of volunteer things since I retired, and the one that I've gotten the most satisfaction out of is doing tours for students at the Central Courthouse in Orange County in Santa Ana. Most of these students are high schoolers, bottom of the same age as the kids here in the audience, and one thing I tell them, they're getting to the point where they're going to get their driver's license and are going to start driving, and I tell them, I guarantee they will have an accident. There's no way around it. Eventually, they're going to have some kind of an accident. Either they'll back into another car or it'll be a little fender bender. Hopefully, it won't be anything extraordinarily tragic. But I tell them also, if you're going to drive, you have to take responsibility. That means if you have any kind of an accident, even if you scrape somebody's car, stop and wait and get it taken care of. Don't run, because by doing that, you are committing a major crime. And this is my message to all young people getting their driver's license. You're going to have problems eventually, but face up to them and do the right thing. Now, in regard to Item 7B, I have a question for our attorney. Now, do we need a first and second reading on an ordinance before it can proceed? And the other thing is that a lot of people come up here to the podium that don't speak English well, and they have an interpreter with them. Now, if you're limiting them to three minutes, sometimes that's not enough time for them to get their full story out. And if you're going to extend more time as a courtesy to these people, then you're discriminating against others who would like to have the same amount of time. So I implore you to please stay with the five minutes. I know it's frustrating to sit up there and listen to some of the complaints that you hear, but let's face it, you put your name on the ballot to run for office and you expected to sit up here and listen to people. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is to listen to people. And do we have an ordinance that says English is the official language of the council? And if so, fine, I think it's been fabricated by the five-minute tirade at the last council meeting, and I think that anything that goes on at this council meeting should be understood by most of us that can speak English. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, Council, staff, Little League members, and everybody else that showed up here tonight. Thank you for participating in local politics. I'm here to speak to the council regarding the November 26th email that I sent to each member here of the council and staff who have publicly listed email addresses on the city website. Not all of you do. This is the same email that was not responded to and then resent to you all again on December the 12th, when only our newly-elected Councilman Chris Phan responded to that and said that he would see what he could do about this. Well, here we are in 2013, and no one has cared to respond or acknowledge my email. This is the kind of behavior by my so-called representatives that has prompted me to suggest our city needs to adopt the Sunshine Ordinance like nearby Santa Ana. The Sunshine Ordinance involves the people of the city, not only when large-scale projects occur where we can put in our input before they begin, but they involve a volunteer panel of concerned citizens that opens, it opens up the doors to these back-room deals and meetings from our publicly-funded officials so that the public becomes aware of what you're up to before we get stuck with another $47 million going to an already wealthy hotel developer. There are many advantages to the public in the details of the Sunshine Ordinance. I encourage everyone here to look into it, Google it, it's publicly out there. The Orange County Register's done a great job reporting on that. I hope that everyone here should read, will read about it. Now, Item 7B. This council has proven that they do not wish to respect the voices or the wills of the Garden Grove residents, and that they would rather control us rather than to work with us. Time after time, we are ignored, brushed aside, and sometimes even belittled by this council. Tonight, they will be presenting an item Agenda 7B, which will certainly pass. Item 7B will restrict the number of speakers who happen to agree on a certain issue, requiring them to choose a spokesperson rather than to allow an individual to represent themselves and speak their own words. It's hard to say how this would be enforced, as I don't know what the person next to me is thinking or if that person's going to speak, and it's pretty much requiring us to come up with a spokesperson ahead of time. Well, good luck with that. I have no idea what so-and-so is going to say. Do I meet with them outside the doors ahead of time and say, "Hey, are you going to talk about this? Are you going to talk about this?" I just don't think that's going to work. Now, it also shortens our time of speaking from five minutes to three minutes. In this fashion, you're going to be suppressing our voices even more and limit the public input towards our city's future. Our city's future. We are already subjected to a one-way dialogue where the council often refuses to respond or acknowledge the people's voice. I have personally felt ignored and shut out for years. As many times as I've come up on this dais, no one has called me back. As many times as I've come up on this dais, no one has called me back, no one has ever responded to any comment, and in your, I'm going to call it, your excuse for coming up with this, so that we have time to facilitate discussion of the topic afterwards, that never happens. I don't know where you got that. I've never had any facilitated topic discussed with me. That's why I'm so frustrated all the time. All right. Finally, I have to address our last council meeting. We had councilwoman Deana Nguyen speaking in a foreign language for nearly five minutes, only translating her words after a public outcry, which many people are still very angry about. We had Mayor Broadwater comparing the audience's applause to Stalin's Communist Party. All you people who've been clapping tonight, he thinks you're a commie. Well, sorry, that's going a little far.
Went way too far.
Yeah. Everyone on this board can throw out the word "commie," but no one up here, you know, a resident can't do that. So I see how that goes. Then we had Ms. Nguyen indirectly calling Fat Boy a commie. And, you know, that's a heavy accusation to make, but I guess that's the strategy conjured up to mask the predictable appointment of the unelectable Mr. Beard again. This council need not fear the people or silence us, but instead, you need to reach out to us. You need to find ways to make Garden Grove a better place, not just for the hotel owners, not just for your developer friends, and not just for those who donate generously to your campaigns. This is our city. We deserve your respect.
Mr. Cassidy, where are you, sir? Who was the first speaker? The head of the...
Craig Cassidy.
Craig, yes. Mr. Cassidy, I'd like you to get your right-hand person or your left-hand person, whoever's closest to you. I'd like you to meet with me and Mrs. Hoy for a few minutes and see what we can arrange to solve that problem.
Absolutely, sounds great.
And we're going to take a break here very soon. What we want to talk to you is about setting up an appointment and seeing what we can do. Only two people from the city council can do that. All five of us can't, because if three of us do it, it's a violation of the Brown Act. But that doesn't mean that we can't meet with Mrs. Swam and two of the board members and see if we can resolve this problem.
Mr. Mayor, could I be a part of that meeting as well?
Well, I don't know where Chris lives. Where do you live?
What do you mean, sir?
Where do you live? Where do you sleep at night?
Oh, over at my place. Why?
Now, that's where the clap, guys. Where do you lay down your head? What would be the address of the place? What street is it on?
McMichael.
McMichael. Okay, so you don't live on the west side?
I do not.
Okay.
May I be a part of that?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, we're going to take, we're going to hit five minutes. What?
David Morse.
I don't have a card for him.
I handed it to you. There was one I couldn't find.
Mr. Morris, please, come up. There it is, on the back of somebody else's card. No wonder.
Thank you. You know, I learned in sales a long time ago, when someone begins to speak, to just be quiet. So I want to extend some appreciation for your willingness, council members, to go ahead and meet with our president in resolving the dilemma that we have. I received a text message from my son this week, that he said that his mother simply wouldn't know if he'd be able to play this year, simply due in part with the possibility of not playing at the school that he's able to walk to and ride a bike to. I simply have listened. I thought I'd throw a couple of quick things that might help your meeting out. Picture's worth a thousand words. I ran over and took a couple of quick pictures and gave a satellite image for you to look at. I know Mr. Cassidy is after one thing. Who do I hand these off to? Should I start them right here?
Yeah, go ahead.
And for everybody out in the audience, it's a satellite image. Currently, as the school day exists, the precedent's already been set that children are being picked up on a daily basis in the parking lot of Bell Intermediate. Under that white tent, in the photograph here, is where the kids meet. They all walk unsupervised, on their own. They've been told what to do, and they do it on a daily basis. They get picked up, and they get dropped off at the end of the day. You can see the construction or the repairs, the sites in general, have been fenced on the front side of the school extremely well, and from what I can tell, everybody within the surrounding community knows what's going on and what not to do. With regard to our desire, if you look to the satellite image, we're just trying to get to the backside of the school, where the fields exist. In the second page of the color photographs is a gate. We've never utilized that gate. We've always had the access with the opened, larger gate in which our handicapped personnel, grandparents and so forth, have been able to get closer to the school fields. In this case, I'm sure we'd have to adapt. It's just that kind of a year. But that gate is currently right behind where that tent already exists, where a number of these kids already get picked up on a bus to go to school. So it's not like there's a change to their structure. We would have to adapt to how do we want to utilize that parking lot, handicap, managers, executive board, everyone else just is going to have to walk a little further. But if you notice that really what our President Cassidy has expended on is putting that fencing, and I'm sure he'll talk to you about it, but yeah, let us help ease that fencing on the backside, but really, our desire is to get to the fields. Parking lots are already being used, they're already secured, and if anything, we're just looking for the opening to get to the fields and have that capability of getting to and from. I don't see a desire to have us participate on any back holes or go where we don't belong. When you have the numbers of the parents, coaches and grandparents, there's a lot of folks on site that are willing to participate in making sure. And hey, maybe the kids have to know that they'll get penalized a few games if they're beyond a certain point. I don't know. That's for us to try to enforce, and I have full faith in the executive board of our Little League, the president, to come up with those parameters. I just wanted you to know that in a year that my son now is making a change to go to another school site after being across the street in elementary school, next year he'll be back at Bell, the following year he'll be at Pacifica, has four schools in four years. And to continue to ask them to adapt, I know I've managed and I've dealt with single parents, and it's difficult for them to get them to and from places on time and for this reason and that reason. This is a site that still allows many of the kids to ride their bikes or walk to. If we get pressed somewhere else, I'm sorry, my son is not going to be able to play. I'm here on his behalf, not mine. Some of the other kids that aren't here tonight, they would be facing the same. It would be a drastic hit to our efforts. But maybe these images will help you, you know, in your meeting with President Cassidy, whether we look at a fencing or a gate further down on the other side of the school, either way, I think there's the opportunity for us to...
The time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go forward.
Thank you.
I would like to say to everybody here that's for the... You know, I had to explain what he was talking about a minute ago, because last week, the group on the outside here clapped and clapped and clapped and clapped, and I made a sort of a joke that when Stalin was head of the Soviet in the Soviet Union, he would get on the stage, and nobody would ever quit clapping, because the first person to quit clapping was scared he might be noticed as the first person to quit clapping. So I guess that's where... Anyway, that's what I said. Didn't say anybody was a communist.
Good question.
Sure.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes.
Have you gone, has the board gone to, have you gone to the school board on this?
They know my proposal to access that particular gate.
Okay, the school board does itself? No, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make it clear that when we were called on this, we were called, I mean, I just took it that we could fix the problem, and we have offered the four best diamonds in the city of Garden Grove to replace your, I mean, we came, I thought that would resolve the problem, and I can understand you not wanting to go that far and all the busing problems and that thing. So we will go forward with this. At this time, we're going to take a break, and then we'll talk about it at the break, what we're going to do.
Well, don't go anywhere. We've got 100 high school students. No, the man was taken away in an ambulance.
Okay, at this time, we reconvene... At this time, we're ready to convene the city council and go into recess to hear about the written communications. We have a written communication first.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a written request from the Garden Grove Community Foundation requesting use of the Willowick Golf Course so they could host the 2013 Golf Classic in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce.
Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, at this time, we will recess the council and go to the successor agencies' business.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call the successor agency meeting for January 8th to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Phan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here.
And Member Nguyen?
Here.
We already did the closed session item, right? That was in conjunction. Consent items, we just have the minutes from November 27th.
And the warrants.
And the warrants, correct.
Move the consent items.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No public hearings, no items for consideration. Do we have any matters from members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn back to city council.
Okay, at this time, we reconvene the city council, and we will go to consent items. Mr. Fertile, I would like to pull 7B.
Okey-dokey. And can we have a motion on the balance?
Move the balance.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay. Resolution amending the city council manual of procedure changes and allot time to public comments at the city council meetings. Let me give you a little history on that. When I first became on the city council, which was, what was it, 1990-something, there was unlimited time. Anybody could get up and speak on any subject as much as they wanted to. And it wasn't very long before we found out that that could be abused very much. We had one lady that spoke for 45 minutes, and we had to put a stop to it. Plus, they could speak, well, they could speak on anything. I mean, first of all, they want to speak on 1A, they could speak on it, on 1B, they could speak on it, 1C, they could speak on it all. And we saw that we were getting nowhere. Our meetings were lasting five, six hours, and it just wasn't working out. So somewhere along that line, we cut it from unlimited time to five minutes. And at that time, we talked to five minutes. And that worked out pretty good for a while, but then we had a number of people that would talk on each issue for five minutes. We had one guy that talked an hour and a half one night, a fellow from the west side of town, big fellow, and he talked an hour and 30 minutes. And he would get up, and he would not talk on the subject that was allotted to him, but he would talk maybe on a battleship that pulled into the harbor in San Diego. And he could go on and on and on, and talk about, I remember one time he talked about Chinese body parts being hauled here in Costco containers. And, what?
I remember that.
Yeah, it happened. So guess what? We decided, and the Brown Act really tightens us down, we decided that we were going to have to do something about that. So what we did was we took oral communications for all agencies, and we put it all together at the front, because the Brown Act says that we have to give you the opportunity to discuss an issue for a certain amount of time prior to us voting on it. And we did that, and it went to five minutes. Now, one of the things that is probably not a major problem, but it is a miniscule problem that I decided we'd call, put this on the consent items tonight to change it to three minutes, was we have certain people that like to use it to run their campaigns with. They come back and they talk every week, and they turn, sometimes turn around and talk to the audience. And this is not a method for you to run a campaign with. I mean, it's an opportunity of addressing the city council on the business of the city. And I noticed that somebody went, I know who it was, but, and put my name in, I don't know what you would call this, it's a blog, it is a blog, and said, "Garden Grove City Council to seek limits public comments at meeting tomorrow." And it's got my picture in there, and it says, "Bulldozer, do something right for the first time in your political career and vote no." My political career goes way, way back. And I can tell you that I tried to write a list down of all the things that I had voted on, that in my opinion were great things for this community, and I ran out of paper. I'm looking for that list here somewhere. Anyway, I don't really need the list. I mean, for somebody to say that finally, in your life of being on the council for over 18 years, finally vote for something that is right, well, that's right only in that person's opinion. And this person, look at the blog he put me on. The blog is for the Orange County Weekly. Now, what type of a person gets involved with the Orange County Weekly? I can only, I can only say that a person that likes looking at ads of drug outlets, oh, here, I'm going to tape. I never saw this before, but I took a hard look at it. Drug outlets, and it says, "Angel Spa Massage, Beauty Relax, Beautiful Girls." Certainly is prostitution, advertising for prostitution. It's full of it. And then marijuana. Some of these things here are so bad. Here's one where they'll give you a, oh, here's the one I like. Highest quality, huge selected, safe and clean. This is a medical facility, advertising to sell their medicine, which is marijuana. Highest quality, voted one, first in Southern California. Mention you saw us in OC Weekly and receive a free joint. That's what it says in there. Now, what type of a person uses this magazine as their ability for politics? It's got to be somebody that is desperate. And believe me, I do believe he is desperate. At this time, I am going to pull 7B off, and we will talk about it some other time. Let's go to eight, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself because I have a business relationship with the applicant.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Mr. Mayor, 8A is a public hearing to consider the development agreement for property located at 15051 Hope Street and Brandywine Homes. Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is a request to transmit a planning commission recommendation for city council approval of a development agreement, number DA 18812, for the construction of a 34-unit apartment complex for property located on the west side of Hope Street, south of Westminster, at 14051 and 14061 Hope Street. On November 15th, the planning commission approved site plan number SP 47212 and lot line adjustment, number LLA 1012, for the construction of a 34-unit apartment complex with allowances for density, concessions and incentives, along with statewide parking standards to provide five affordable units in conjunction with consolidating two existing lots into one in order to construct the complex. Along with the site plan and the lot line adjustment, the planning commission recommended city council... adjustment, the planning commission recommended city council approval of development agreement number DA 18812. The proposed development agreement provides that the applicant will be guaranteed four years in which to construct the project, and the city will receive from the developer a development agreement payment. Development agreement payments are designed to provide benefits to the public in return for the extended period within which to construct the project. If the development agreement is not approved, the land use entitlements will be valid for one year, and the city council would not receive any payment. The planning commission recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance regarding development agreement number DA 18812 for site plan number SP 447212 and lot line adjustment number LLA 1012, tentative track map TT 17461. That reads as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting development agreement number DA 18812 between the city of Garden Grove and Garden Grove 10451 Hope LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. I only have one card, and I think I lost that. Oh, there it is. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening again, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll make this short and sweet, under three minutes. I'd like to ask our friends at Brandywine to give back to the community tonight as a token of appreciation for almost exclusive contracts that we allow them to do business in our city, and to just give back the tiniest little thing to Garden Grove. And I'm asking them to supply us with some brand-new American flags for Main Street Garden Grove. Mr. Berisik, if you're here, or, I'm sorry, I can't remember your names. Yes, Mr. Berisik. All I ask is that, as a token of appreciation for your contracts, that you give us back a little something. And as a member of Garden Grove Downtown Business Association, we'd greatly appreciate your donation, and thank you. Thank you, staff.
Anybody else speak on this? Mr. Branderwine, please.
Jim Berisik, Brandywine Homes, 16580 Ashton Street in Irvine, California. Mayor Broadwater, members of the council. It's, it really has been our privilege for about a dozen years now to be part of the city of Garden Grove community and be able to provide new homes for residents in Garden Grove. And with this proposed 34-unit apartment community on Hope Street, we would ask your approval of the development agreement so we can continue to provide such new housing, and be glad to respond to any questions you have. And of course, we'll continue to work with the city in any way we can in terms of sponsoring and improving the community, whether it's Main Street merchants, Garden Grove Community Foundation, whatever it might be. Thank you.
How many, how many things have you donated to? Could you list them?
No, I think I've run out of paper also, Mayor. But, but we, you, you give back to the community that you, that helps you as well. So, it's a two-way street.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none. At this time, we will close the public hearing.
Can I ask some questions, Steph?
Sure.
Related to the development agreement, the city's paid $65,144. What does that money go for, for the benefit of the audience? Infrastructure? Does it go for parks and rec? There's a portion that goes for different purposes to the city? That is a benefit to the city?
It goes into a development impact fee fund that, that can be used anywhere in the city. The premise is to address impacts on the city, but there's no specific purpose. But it does go into a, a special fund that the city then uses throughout the community.
Which benefits the city, in essence?
Correct.
Okay. That's a giving back process in, in and of itself.
In addition, all developments make a contribution to our park and, art and public places, and our cultural arts fee. So, there's separate fees for that.
Including this project?
Including this project. As well as, because this is a residential project, they make a contribution in a parking lieu fee, $5,500 a unit. So, in addition to this development fee, they make other contributions to, to the community as well.
Okay. Question for the planning director. In the project statistics, it meets or exceeds the code requirements, does it not, this particular project?
It meets the code requirements because it's an affordable housing project, density bonus project. There are some standards that are set by the state that are a little bit less, particularly in terms of parking. But it does meet or exceed those requirements set by the state.
Yeah, most notably lot size, correct? That's one of the primary.
Right, it does.
It exceeds that, far exceeds that.
It does exceed the lot size.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Anybody else? Any questions? Entertainer motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Please cast your vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Could you get Steve back in, please? Okay, let's go to, there's no commission or committee matters. Let's go for items in consideration.
Mr. Mayor, your first item, 10A, is the appointment of council members to various boards and commissions and committees. You have a list of the current appointments, as well as the vacancies, attached to your report. We may go down the list one by one, and perhaps see if the existing appointee wishes to stay on, or if they, or if you wish to, to replace that person, and as well as filling vacancies. So, there's a list attached to item 10A.
Yeah.
I don't know. I had one right here, five minutes.
Barely.
Okay, we'll share. Okay, Association of California Cities, Orange County, Orange County Advocacy Committee. Mr. Jones, you're currently on that committee?
Yes.
What does that committee do?
They advocate for local control. So, they're sort of an advocacy group that sort of fights against the state taking away redevelopment, taking away all our money, and taking, telling us what we can do, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Jones has been an excellent representative on that. If he's willing to stay, I'd like to recommend he continue doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
A second then.
Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Each one? Okay.
We'll vote, we'll vote on Jones and the Association of California Cities, Orange County.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, yeah, audit committee.
The audit committee is actually a requirement of our auditing obligations. And we've had a council committee that serves as the audit committee. In the past, it was the mayor, as well as another council member.
That's why it's vacant.
Correct. Is it a requirement of the mayor or a preference?
It's not a requirement.
I didn't hear what he said.
Not a requirement.
I don't think it's a requirement, it's a preference.
That the mayor serve on the committee.
That the mayor serve on that committee.
I volunteer to do that if you want me to.
I nominate the mayor, and Mr. Phan as the second representative.
Second, if that's okay with you?
That's fine. As far as the time commitment.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Super minimal.
Would be during the daytime, or evening time, or anything of that?
Mr. Phan, we're councilman, it'll be during the time you want it to be.
Roger that, Mayor. Sounds great.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The next appointment, the fire training joint powers authority. This is a JPA between Anaheim, Orange, and Garden Grove to operate the fire training facility there near the stadium. We are a third owner in, in that property and operation of that facility. And I believe they have quarterly meetings. In the past, Mayor Dalton served on this. It's not a requirement that the mayor serve on this, but he was the representative before.
I really think that Chris, I've got so many Chris's, I can't remember their last names.
Young Chris, or the other Chris?
The old Chris.
I volunteer for that.
Good-looking Chris, or good-looking Chris?
All right. Call for the vote. We got a second? A motion, a second?
Second.
Which Chris? Chris Beard?
Chris Beard, yes.
Okay.
Hair with a mustache.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The next one is the Garden Grove Community Foundation. I don't know, maybe you do, Steve.
Hold on, hold on, Matt. Does that mean I'm still on the fire training joint power authority?
As an alternative, alternate, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Okay, nobody mentioned my name. Okay, fine. That's fine.
Do we need to act on that?
Officially, yes.
I'd like to nominate Dina.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And relative to the community foundation, I don't know if those terms are already set, or are we up for a reappointment? I don't.
Well, Jones is going to be the vice president, I mean, the president.
I just became president, so I should probably stay on there.
Yeah.
I have, um.
Because they, they do have terms, and I apologize, I, I don't.
I don't know exactly how that works from their side of it either, but.
If.
I think I'm just finishing the first term.
You are finishing a term.
Yeah, so, I'd like to be back on it, though.
Okay, I'll move Jones and Broadwater.
Second, Matt.
Okay.
Motion received, five yes votes.
In the past, I know Councilmember Jones has served on a couple of committees through the League of California Cities.
I have a question. This is kind of coincide with the first one, right? Association of California Cities kind of touches on the same kind of issues as the other one.
Sure.
So, I think it'd make more sense to have the same person on both?
It's, yeah, it, I wouldn't mind doing it again if you want me to.
Are you willing to?
Yeah. It ties in, and I understand how both organizations work, and what's similar and what's different.
I'll move the reappointment.
Second, Matt.
Call for the vote.
Take your voting, yes. Motion received, five yes votes.
On the next one, Mr. Jones, can you tell me what you do in there?
I've never actually gotten very actively involved with that group, so I'm aware of them. I know briefly what they do, but if somebody else wants to take a crack at that one, then you're welcome.
How often do they meet?
With library.
Let me talk about what they do. They're 27 representatives. That means about three times they get to say something, because it goes around 27 people to vote. The one time I was, they, they wanted to put a new, brand-new library in Irvine in the Great Park, which I was totally opposed to in the first place. And so, I remember, I was the 27th person to vote, and they all voted no. And I just looked at them and said, "I think it's a good place to put an airport." Anyway, we got to put somebody on that, but I don't, that doesn't say they have to go to the meetings.
I nominate Mr. Phan.
I accept.
We're talking about the library advisory board, correct?
No, this is OCOG.
No, we're talking about the library.
Oh, did we skip?
Mayor, Mayor Broadwater was talking about the library.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
I thought you got it for both, OCOG and?
I'd like to nominate Phan for both.
For both League of Cities and?
No, for OCOG and library. Already did League of Cities. But right after League of Cities is Orange County Council of Governments. That's fine, Mayor.
Okay. I need a motion.
I move to approve.
Both of them?
Yes, I'm both of them.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Santa Ana River Protection Agency, I don't believe they've convened in some time, but we are technically still within the boundaries of this group.
Does it have to be a, an elected official?
I don't know.
Why don't you find out?
As far as I know, I, it does, but I'll research for, to confirm that.
Okay, let's, we'll bring that back. Vietnam War Museum, American Foundation, I'd like to leave that alone if possibly can.
I'd like to stay on there.
We'll nominate that we keep the same.
I'll second, say, commend you for doing such a good job on it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, the vector control, I want to skip that. Sanitary District, mayor had that for years, and before him, you know, I do believe that when we took over the sanitary district, that it was written in there that the mayor had to be on that. And we right away changed it. I don't know if we legally changed it or not, but because I remember Mark Lees took the first seat on it officially.
Yeah, I don't think it requires the mayor. I think, certainly, the mayor was on it for his tenure as mayor, but I don't think it requires the mayor. So, it's free to be filled by anyone.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Jones then, for the representative.
Accept.
Second, Matt.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The SCAG is very closely aligned with OCOG.
We're going to keep Beard as the?
Oh, I think both of them, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, we're voting on both, okay.
We submit the motion that we voted on both?
Sorry about that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
The SCAG appointment is closely related to OCOG, and so whoever's serving on the OCOG should probably be our SCAG representative.
That's fine. Okay.
Can we change these at midterm any time?
I think so. I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Phan, you sort of got left out, but you're the new guy. And the newbie usually gets left out of a lot of things. But if you keep this list and go over it, if there's something that you really, your heart's desire, let's talk about it and see what we can do.
I sure will. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
Do we have a vote on that, Councilmember Phan?
Move it.
Second.
Or Phan?
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
West Orange County Water Board. When's the last time they had a meeting?
I think they meet quarterly, or, you know, either monthly or quarterly, first Friday or something of the month.
Fifth Friday, maybe.
Is the preference to have the mayor on that?
I don't believe so.
I don't want to be on it.
You know, some of these.
Just because water is in my name doesn't mean I should be on the Water Board.
I'd like to volunteer to be on that board.
Okay. Anybody else want to be on it?
I nominate Beard.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we'll hold the vector control spot open for a future date. When, you want that listed? I believe in, at the next meeting, we're bringing back commission appointments.
Yes.
You want to list that at that time?
That'll be fine.
Okay.
And we'll talk about vector control at that time.
When, when do we have housing authority?
Next meeting.
10, 10, 10B, yes.
That's the purchase of ammunition for the police department, and Captain Todd Elgin is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Broadwater and members of council. I'm here on behalf of the police department to seek approval for a three-year, $270,000 ammunition purchase order with Dooley Enterprises Incorporated. The purchase order will be for the purchase of duty and training ammunition, not to exceed $90,000 per year. Dooley Enterprises is the sole Southern California distributor for the Winchester ammunition. sole Southern California distributor for the Winchester ammunition. In 2011, the city council approved a one-year, $90,000 purchase order and are now seeking, and we are now seeking approval for a three-year purchase order. Winchester ammunition is what we currently use within the police department and it is considered top in the industry. It's also the ammunition we've been using for over 20 years.
What's the shelf life on it?
We go through it so fast, we probably, I couldn't tell you what that is. Pursuant to immunity code 2.50.6060D and based on the police department's recommendation, the finance director has deemed Dooley Enterprises Incorporated as the sole provider. With regard to the financial impact, the full $90,000 has already been built into our current 2012, 2013 budget and the same will be true for the 2013, 14 budget as well as the 2014, 2015 budget. Winchester has also authorized fixed pricing for the current year and is willing to authorize that same type of pricing for the next two years. And the chief of police is recommending that we, the council authorized the finance director to issue a three-years purchase order in amount of $270,000 to Dooley Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of the ammunition. That's the end of my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just one. Do we actually have a requirement to come out to bid for this contract?
I think based on the amount and the fact that it is a sole provider, that there's no need to go out for bid because it's the only company in the area that actually has the Winchester ammunition.
Thank you.
And that's allowable under purchasing provisions of the law and everything like that? Sole source provider, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to 11A.
Mr. Mayor, that's ordinance for second reading number 2825, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove adopting First Amendment to the development agreement between the city of Garden Grove and Landmark Marriott Suite LLC.
Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
12A.
Mr. Mayor, 12A is a update summary of the Garden Grove Gun Surrender Event we held just before Christmas and Chief Rainey is here to give a status of that event.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As mentioned, on Sunday, December 23rd, the city of Garden Grove did conduct a voluntary gun surrender program at the Courtyard Center. The program was operational from 12 noon until 4:00 PM in the afternoon. It was done on relatively short notice. We advertised it locally effective Thursday, so it did only have about 72 hours to actually get the notice out there, but the, the response was actually good in my opinion. The, the police department actually took possession of 10 firearms. The majority were pistols, handguns, but there was one semi-assault, I'm sorry, semi-automatic assault weapon, which looked like an AK-47. And that weapon was also voluntarily surrendered. And everybody that participated it, both from a staff standpoint and from the, the residents that participated, I think that the comments that were exchanged were very positive, very supportive of the city's efforts to at least allow people the opportunity to, you know, to dispose of firearms in a safe and legal manner. There were no infractions. Everybody followed the rules as far as coming with the weapons in the trunk, having them unloaded. We had different stages so officers could, you know, at least check the weapon, inspect them, render them safe, things like that. The operation went very smooth. There was one gun firearms dealer who was actually before, gotten to the park and was trying to buy weapons from people that were looking to surrender them, but nobody took them up on his offer and they actually surrendered the weapons. So all in all, it was a very, a very positive event. It was, it was open to Garden Grove residents only. The only form of identification or information we asked was just proof of residency. We did not record anybody's information. We did check all the firearms after they were surrendered. None of them were reported stolen, so they weren't part of a crime and the weapons will then now be destroyed according to law.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time we'll go to the German person.
Sorry, Mayor, can I ask a quick, real quick question? Throughout the year, is there any other means for citizens to turn in guns that they're not using or say, "I had a gun and an event like this didn't come up." Is there a means of delivering your unused gun to the police department or something like that?
There is. At any time, somebody can come to the front desk and we do have that happen periodically. All we ask is that if people are watching this or we need to get the information out, before you actually walk into the front door, the front lobby of the police department with a gun exposed, we ask that you leave the weapon in the trunk, come in and talk to the desk officer and say that you do have a weapon that you'd like to turn into the police department and the officer will go accompany to the vehicle and take possession of the weapon.
Okay, good, good. Again, I also commend you for doing that on short notice and the timing of it such. Do you plan on any other future events like this down the road? Maybe have another gun surrender?
I, I think it's, it certainly bears the discussion as certainly the, the whole issue that the nation is dealing with right now, you know, as it relates to firearms and certainly the violence that's associated with that and other factors, I, I think it would be a worthwhile endeavor.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Beard, do you have anything for us to hear?
Just a couple items. I'm, I'm happy to announce that the Garden Grove Sister City Association will be hosting 10 students coming in to city of Garden Grove and I want to thank the host families for being, for hosting the students. They'll be here a week, 10 days. And part of the program is to facilitate their education. It's a cultural learning experience for them and vice versa. See, On Yang is our sister city in South Korea and in turn we have students, some of our students, 10, going in there in April. So I want to welcome, where they're going to be meeting the city council, they have a, a lot of activities planned for them. It's well-run, it's put on by volunteers. I encourage anybody who's interested to be a part of the Garden Grove Sister City Association as a member, as a host or participant in any way to, you can go to the Garden Grove SisterCity.com website and they'll be coming in soon and we're hosting students again this year and it's always a joy. It's, it's enriching educational experiences, fun experience as well, seeing all the young people get together. And again, I just want to commend the chief, the police department for the gun surrender. Well done and I hope to see more in the future. And other cities have had incentives and things like that. Maybe we could look at that down the road as well. And I want to wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Earlier we had a speaker by name of Bob Tucker and he had a lot of concern about the special ed children in the school district and I've been an advocate for special ed education for as long as I can remember being an attorney. The services are very needed and the children are very deserving of the services. So I've been looking into that matter and speaking with some of the school board members regarding their comments. Maybe there, there was some miscommunication sometimes on the dais. You don't have as much time to think, you don't have as much time to review everything. You have a lot of issue on your mind and you may not say the things you want to say, the way you want to say it. Thank you, Bob Tucker. I haven't seen him for a while, but every time he comes to the council meeting, he has very good subjects to bring to the council. As far as the Garden Grove Little League, I'm very happy that we will be taking part in that, especially with the leadership of the mayor. I have known him to, been very successful, have been very successful on a lot of these negotiations and I have a lot of faith in him. Aside from that, I've checked with the city attorney individually. I will be calling the school board members and advocating for the West Garden Grove Little League. I wanted to also address the issue of the last meeting. Of all my years that I've been working as a public servant, 18 years with the Superior Court and six years now with the city council, of all the times that I've used the Vietnamese language, no one has ever said to me that it was wrong to use the Vietnamese language. And it's an issue and a matter of when and where to use the language. And it's all about communication. If you have to communicate to people who don't understand, you do need to do that sometimes. Of 157 meetings that I've been to and that have been held since I became a council member, I only remember three different times that I used another language and I've been blessed with the ability to speak another language. The first issue was the casino issue. The second one was the Quan Um Temple. And the third was the appointment, the last appointment for the city council position. At that meeting, I spoke about the person I want to nominate. I spoke of no name at all. I did not mention Mr. Phat Bu as Mr. Flores has accused me of doing. The person I wanted to talk about was the qualified person and that was Mr. Chris Beard. If anybody thought it was anyone else, they have to think again. If it was the person I'm talking about is Mr. Phat Bu, then I would have nominated him already because I was speaking about my criteria. I spoke in Vietnamese and before I could even take my next breath to translate into Vietnamese, just like all the other time that I've done that, a heckler in the audience interrupted brutally before I could even translate it. So I do want to clarify that. It is never used to be divisive. It is used to communicate and to bring understanding so that we would have unity. Obviously that day, I did not nominate anyone who was Vietnamese American. So therefore, the community is, who is very concerned or who, which is very concerned about that, they want to know and especially a third of Garden Grove is Vietnamese, a third of Garden Grove is Latino speaking and a third of Garden Grove is English speaking. I want to be able to go out to the homes in Vietnamese, Spanish and English. That's because we need to communicate and such as the last meeting. And it doesn't happen very often, but I felt that was one of the ones that I do need to communicate. And a lot of people have seen me on TV speaking Vietnamese and they want, they thank me for explaining the criteria that I use in making my recommendation and they thank me for allowing them to understand. I believe that all the voters in Garden Grove have the same rights and because of that, the voter registrar have made voting materials in different languages so they can understand their rights. And as such, sometimes I do have to think about those rights. And the one thing I do regret is the next time when there's a big issue like that, I probably will speak Spanish as well. And I pretty much gauge the audience and see who's in the audience. That tells the council who's interested in the subject, who really wants you to communicate with them. And the part about the speaking being three minutes or five minutes, that's not the only time they can communicate with the council. I just want to let everyone know that you can communicate with the council outside of this dais. You can call us up, our secretary and make appointment and that number is 714-741-5103. I have spent a lot of time outside of my work to talk to people and one of those people is Tony Flores. I've spent a lot of time with him. I took time off from work to talk to Mr. Tony Flores, listen to him, only that later on, he billed the city for his time. And I think that wasn't right. And he comes here, he complains about speaking three minutes or five minutes and when it's time to address his concern, he's not here in the audience. I think it's some, it's about time someone says something about that. And I may take the heat for that because he's always coming here, giving everyone a hard time. I'm ready for it. So I made my peace with all of that and I hope that everyone else does too. I'm sorry if anyone was offended, but it's a decision that I don't regret and I think it was necessary. Sorry to the council, I took a little bit, a little bit time on explaining that. I want to say happy birthday to Chris Phan and welcome to our council and also please remember to buy in Garden Grove.
Chris Phan.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone for making me so welcome, feel so welcome in my first few weeks here. In a, in a lot of ways, it's very welcoming because of the fact that when I was campaigning, I told the reason why I came back to Garden Grove was because I love the people who lived here and who made it a community. And I can see that from our council and from all the great help that staff has given me. Within the first few weeks of being on the council, I have received many phone calls and requests from our, our residents to help out with issues. And as you probably well know, being new, I really don't have a lot of the answers. But when I turn to staff, they're always there to assist me in more ways than I can even ask for. So I just want to say publicly, everybody, that I've been to council meetings, I've been to other meetings in other cities and by far, I am so impressed with the caliber of staff and people we have supporting our city. I'm also very impressed with the amount of participation that we have from the audience and from the community because that's the way we can do better is to hear the feedback and work together to make our community stronger. So once again, thank you so much for making me feel so welcome and a happy new year.
Thank you.
Steve Jones.
Thank you.
For starters, happy birthday to Councilman Phan. And then I would just like to address the West Garden Grove Little League issue a little bit specifically and then a little more broadly in a very concise fashion. A lot of people, I think, misunderstand that the, that the school district is somehow a department of the city or is somehow tied in together with the city. And it's not, I mean, completely separate administration, completely separate offices. We work together well. We've got a great open dialogue with them, but they have their own agenda and their own thing. That being said, I completely understand that they have a massive amount of logistics with regard to their reconstruction of a number of schools over a several year period, moving children around, co-locating at different schools while they fix up certain schools and just everything that goes with that. I've heard Dr. Laura Schwam describe it as trying to reconstruct, you know, airplanes that are full of passengers in flight, you know, and that sort of thing. So I completely appreciate that. That being said, you know, I think our, our youth sports and our recreational activities in the parks, in the schools, in all of our public open space are absolutely vital to this community. And I would, I would just urge that they take the extra effort to try and understand that and help us work through this. And if, if it is logistically possible for the Little League to be played there, I hope we can get there. I hope the city as a body could provide some sort of, you know, backstop, if you will, no pun intended, like a credit enhancement or whatever to say that we'll guarantee that everything will get put back in its place and that fences that go up will come back down and that sort of thing, right? I understand that the Little League is willing to bear the, you know, whatever is necessary to make it happen, but just that we would say that we're on board with that too. And then just to augment that and just say, despite their construction efforts, which is sort of a near-term event, I mean, that may last three or four years going forward. But just to take a broad look at the city and the city working together with the school district to try and really enhance all of our public amenities and all of our open spaces. So I'd love to see more agreements between the city and the school district to be able to use school fields, to put up more lighting, to put up more backstops, to redo playgrounds, that sort of thing. If you look around, our, a lot of our playgrounds are older, they're blighted. There's, sometimes you'll see a ball field that has lighting and there's a practice that's scheduled that's going on there. And there's 10 other practices going on in the spill light of that field, like out on the outside edges. And then there's a playground being used by all the little brothers and sisters that has no light and it's, you know, after dark and that sort of thing. So I've witnessed these things by having young kids and being at that stage of life, but I think it applies to a lot of people around town too. So I'd love to see a more active involvement with our school district, more focused effort on improving our public amenities. And I think that's the very first step towards making the whole city a better place, attracting better retailers and that sort of thing comes with how attractive we are as a city to live in.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the whole city council. We've got a highly educated city council. I mean, there's probably 10, certainly 10 degrees sitting here. I mean, some of them have gone the max. So it's great. I think everybody's comfortable. I think everybody's comfortable with each other, we are not mad at each other or anything, and we hope we keep it that way. I, I think everybody here is a very congenial individual, so we've got, we've really got a good city council. I want to mention the Vietnam War Museum, the Foundation of America is holding its second speaking engagement of a third three-part series. Appellate Court Justice Eileen Moore will be speaking about her experience as a nurse during the Vietnam War. And if you haven't heard her speak, she is fantastic. She's got a lot to say, and she's got a good sense of humor too. Her story is not only extremely personal, but it gives us a glimpse into a different aspect of the Vietnam War. She'll probably be talking about it, but they put her in an airplane that was flying over a, a group of the enemy somewhere, and they started shooting at the airplane, and the pilot, and the co-pilot and I guess a couple of gunners were on it playing, and I'm not sure what it was, a helicopter, a regular plane, but anyway, they all wrapped her, wrapped her up in their gun protective, what do the cops wear?
Vest.
Yes, that's it. Anyway, and the pilot says, "No army nurse is going to die on my watch." And, you know, it was, she's got, got some experiences to tell that are fantastic. She came back, became a lawyer, and sat on the Superior Court, and now she's on the Court of Appeals. And I have a lot of respect for the Court of Appeals. I know that they read your briefs. Anyway, at this time, we will close the meeting. We are going to have another meeting on January the 22nd about the same time, and we look forward to seeing you again.